Well, good evening and welcome to the January 9th, 2023 City Council Meeting. I am Mayor Ross and tonight's City Council Meeting is brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. Tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. Welcome to all and thank you for joining us tonight and Happy New Year. City Clerk Dean, would please call the roll.
Councilmember Benson?
Present.
Councilmember Watton?
Here.
Councilmember Holloway?
Here.
Councilmember Mayhew?
Here.
Councilmember Lasse?
Here.
Councilmember Christensen?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
And Mayor Ross.
I am here. Thank you, City Clerk Dean. Council, please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. It'll be Councilmember Benson, would you please lead the allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now move to our first item of regular business, which is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Mayhew, second by Councilmember Holloway to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, it's the eye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, the ayes have it and the motion, the agenda is approved. Next item of business this evening is AB 23-007, the 2023 Mayor Pro Tem Election. So pursuant to Chapter RCW 35A, dot 12, dot 065, and the City Council Rules of Procedure, Rule 4, Exhibit, Exhibit 1, by Annolly, at the first meeting of a new council or periodically the members thereof may, by majority vote, shall designate one of their number as Mayor Pro Tem for such period as the council may specify to serve in the absence or temporary disability of the mayor. Council, does anyone wish to nominate the council member to serve as Mayor Pro Tem? Mayor Pro Tem Mayhew?
Yes, just as a reminder to councilmembers, not, these nominations don't require second under Robert's Rules of Order. I've been honored to serve as your Mayor Pro Tem for the last three years. It's a long time doing that job. It's been a privilege. I am not going to be attempting to do that for the next year, but I'm very pleased to know that Councilmember Holloway is willing to do that and I nominate Councilmember Holloway as Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Councilmember Holloway, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
So Councilmember Holloway is nominated. Are there any further nominations for Mayor Pro Tem?
I nominate Rob Watton as Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Councilmember Christensen. Councilmember Watton, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Thank you. Are there any further nominations for Mayor Pro Tem? Any further nominations? Any further nominations? So council, no further nominations with no objection, I will close nominations. Nominations are now closed. So if council is in agreement, let's provide the opportunity for each candidate to provide a statement as to why he is interested in Mayor Pro Tem. And so since the first nomination came in for Councilmember Holloway, Councilmember Holloway, would you please, floor is yours, to tell us why you would like to be Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah. So initially, I did not seek, seek this office. I was asked by existing Mayor Pro Tem to stand in and as for a number of reasons. One, I've got the 20 years of experience of council going through here. Two, as a often elected official, I feel that second to the mayor's position should be an elected individual, having gone through that process of my birth times. I have been also Mayor Pro Tem on several occasions in the past councils, so I have experience of doing the job. And you've seen me, how I work in council, I'm not, don't usually have an agenda and I will work for a compromise and work for all of us. That's my statement.
Thank you, Councilmember Holloway. Councilmember Watton?
Thank you and I appreciate the nomination. When this council chose me last, last January to fill this position, I was deeply honored and it's given me a chance to spend the past year working with each of you. And here's the thing. If I had run for the position, one of the six of you would not be on this council. And that would be a, a, at the detriment of the city. And I, I've had the chance to see each one of you and understand where you're coming from and you bring a lot of experience and value to this council. As part of this city, I've been a resident here for 17 years and for the last eight years, I've been helping to support the work of economic development through the EDC, through affordable housing. When I joined the EDC, number 11 of our top 10 items from the EDC was SR 18. And I looked at Roger McCollum and he and I agreed that it needed to be one of our top issues. So we brought the legislative delegation behind us. We had the support of the mayor and it's an ongoing process, but I've been deeply involved in that for the behalf of the city as well as the region. The second thing that I've been working on is affordable housing and along with Kelly Coughlin and I have been serving on the King County Affordable Housing Committee as a voting delegate. And so we help to express the interest and the support of this community as well as others, including the city of North Bend, and we've worked closely together. But I think the other thing that's really important and that's our regional effect. When we work together, we know we can accomplish a lot and I don't do it alone. I do it with a lot of people, including, I'm going to be counting on this council to be equals in us governing this city and doing so fairly and equitably for the city. And I think that if you look at the makeup of our council, we have a bit of a deficit. We don't always truly represent our neighborhood and I think there's a way of doing that better and we can discuss that in our March retreat. So yes, I understand, I am the newest member of the council, but my background was in state and local government at University of Puget Sound where I paired that with business administration with the idea that we could bring business practices to local government. And I think that we're, we're on that path, but I think there's a lot more we can accomplish together. And I think the last thing is that I look at the talent of this council and I say, you know what? Every one of us should have the opportunity to lead. And I think looking at the retreat and we'll have that chance to figure out what it is that we want to do as our path forward. I think one of the things that we need to do is we need to limit the number of meetings we each have. Currently worried about 10 apiece every month and I think that we can put a plan together to get us to six or seven so that we can spend more time on regional issues, on helping to move our city forward. So I appreciate your consideration. Win or lose, I think that, you know, in the end, the city is better off with an engaged, involved city council and that's what I pledge to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Watton. So Councilmember Zuri, any discussion? Councilmember Benson?
Yeah, I wanted, I just want to say I'm excited that we're going to have an excellent Mayor Pro Tem regardless of how this vote goes and I think either one of you do a fabulous job. And I want to thank Mayor Pro Tem Emeritus Mayhew for his service. I know that, well, you're, you're the best Mayor Pro Tem I've gotten to work with and and I've appreciated that you've spent the last year not treating me like an idiot just because I am. So I, I appreciate your patience. I appreciate your, your guidance and, and although we are going to have an excellent Mayor Pro Tem, I will miss you as Mayor Pro Tem. So visit. That's all.
Councilmember Benson, any other comments? All right, seeing none. So because Councilmember Holloway was nominated first, let's move to a vote. All those in favor of Councilmember Holloway, please say aye.
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 So there were four votes?
Can we do show of hands?
Show of hands? All right. And those opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. So the new, the ayes have it and the new Mayor Pro Tem is Councilmember Holloway. He's elected as Mayor Pro Tem. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Mayhew, for your last three years of leadership. Thank you for your leadership, last three years. So congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem Holloway.
Thank you.
Right. So moving on, next item of business is AB 23-008, 2023 Council Committee Membership and Liaison Appointments. So Mayor Pro Tem Holloway, do you wish to make appointments tonight or do you choose to postpone?
I do not want to presume of, did not want to presume of making committee assignments prior to election. So I think it's inappropriate for to have it on the agenda tonight, would like to shift it out for two weeks.
Okay, so you'll change it to January 23rd, give you a chance to meet individually with the councilmembers.
Please advise me if, you know, if there's particular committees you want, liaison positions, whatever. I don't intend to make fast changes. It usually hurts the process, but if there's rotations or whatever you're interested in, please let me know.
Councilperson Johnson?
Do we just continue with our current assignments until we have new ones? Okay.
Yes. Yes, thank you. Next item of business this evening is AB 23-009, Appointments to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee and Reappointments to the Economic Development Commission and Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. So the purpose is to appoint Ellen Stevens to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee and to reappoint Lewis Washington, Rob McDonald, Sherri Jennings, and Bobby Harrison to the Economic Development Commission and Lori Hay, Richard Anderson, and Kelly Coughlin to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. So Ellen Stevens is the General Manager, Regional Vice President of Salish Lodge and Spa and he's replacing Shannon Galusha, also of the Salish Lodge and Spa, and will be a great addition to the commission. And we will report, reappoint Rob McDonald, Bobby Harrison, Lewis Washington, and Sherri Jennings. They have been serving on the Economic Development Commission and are active participants and wish to continue their service to the city. And Lori Hay, Richard Anderson, and Kelly Coughlin were on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee and also wish to continue their, continue their service. So they have a motion to continue, council, to confirm the mayor's recommendations of appointments and reappointments.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilwoman Johnson and seconded by Councilwoman Benson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, it's the eye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Great. So the motion passes and we really thank the commissioners for their continued service and I see several are here. Does anyone wish to make a comment? The way she just waved and say, all right, because we got Mr. McDonald, Lori Hay, and Kelly Coughlin with us and I'm not sure who is online, but, and Lewis Washington is online. Great. Thank you everyone for your service and congratulations and thank you for stepping up again. All right. Next is the introduction of our new Budget Analyst, Jana Walker. Budget Manager Drew Bute, would you please introduce Ms. Walker?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Happy New Year. I don't have a badge to pin tonight, but if I did, it would exclaim how awesome it is to actually have Jana come join us at the city today. She was actually working with us between May and October of this past year. She was actually behind the scenes doing a lot of the analysis and making sure that everything was properly reconciled and everything like that. So it's great to actually have her back. Primarily reason why we didn't have her between October and the end of the year is because she actually took the sure thing, couldn't necessarily promise her a position here at the city, so she took the sure thing, but may have actually benefited us in the end because she knew how much she wanted to come back to the city as a result of that. Just to give a bit of a background, her family is located here in the valley itself. I've actually worked with her husband in the past in a small world overall, but she's got two kids at Mount Si, one at Falls City Elementary, as well as another one at the middle school down there too. Her background is in accounting. She has a bachelor's and master's of accounting degree at, from BYU. Also, she's got a CPA, which is very valuable in local government. She used to work for KPMG and has a lot of that experience that we really do crave here at the city. So we're very lucky to have her. Some of the things that she's going to be working on moving forward is implementing the budget. We're going through that process right now, but you can expect things like a quarterly right, financial report as well as an internal cost allocation plan in the future too that she'll be assisting us with. So with that said, it's joyful to actually have her on board with the city overall. We're very lucky to have her come back to us. And so with that said, I want to welcome her up and she wants to say a little bit more about herself and thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Drew. It really is a pleasure to be back here. I have a lot of respect for the finance department here and, and really everyone that I've worked with at the city. It's been a pleasure and I'm happy to be back. As Drew said, I have a lot of ties to the community and so I'm looking forward to working with you and having a positive impact on this community that I really love. Thank you.
We're very excited you came back. Thank you. Next is a presentation by Puget Sound Regional Council on the Vision 2050 and Comp Plan Update. Our Economic Development Director, actually be Community Development Director, Emily Arteja, if you introduce the speakers, that would be great. Thank you.
Yes, we have Maggie Moore from the Puget Sound Regional Government. She is a senior planner. She's going to be accompanied by Liz Underwood, who is a principal planner at Puget Sound Regional Government. These two individuals have agreed to do a high-level executive presentation for you tonight to assist, this is what they do, assist local governments in helping them understand the various parts to updating their city comprehensive plans. So without further ado, I'll just turn it over to the presentation.
Thank you. Great. Good evening. Thank you so much and thank you for letting us join virtually. I'm going to share my presentation here. So as mentioned, I'm Maggie Moore. I'm a senior planner in the Growth Management Group at the Puget Sound Regional Council and I'm here today to share some information about PSRC and what that means for your update to your local comprehensive plan. So today I'm going to talk about PSRC as well as Vision 2050, which really helps to set the stage for your local comprehensive plan. I'll also talk a bit about our housing work as well as some of the guidance and resources we've been creating and then we'll open it up to questions and I'm joined by Liz Underwood Boltman from PSRC who will join me in that question section at the end of today's presentation. So for those of you who may not be familiar or just as a refresher, the Puget Sound Regional Council is the planning agency for the central Puget Sound region, which covers the four counties of King, Pierce, Snohomish, and Kitsap. And there are over 4 million people that live in this region and within those four counties are 82 cities and towns and it's composed of both urban and rural area. So much of that urban area is in cities and some is in unincorporated counties and then the rural area surrounding that urban growth area. And I just really like to emphasize that something that makes our region so special is really our natural environment all around us. Out in Snoqualmie, you are even closer to it than I am here in Seattle, so I know, no reminder is needed there. But before we get into talking about Vision 2050 and our long-range plan for growth, I want to talk a little bit about some of the other work we do at PSRC. So we are the agency responsible for developing the region's transportation plan. This is adopted every four years, was last adopted in 2022 and this plan really makes progress on existing challenges, addressing current and future needs of the transportation system. And to do that, it really uses a lot of data and analysis. So it has, includes its new visualization tool, which really can be a tool used for local governments in developing their comprehensive plans that shows both existing street networks and transit, bicycle and sidewalk networks, as well as future investments in the region's transportation system. We are also the agency that distributes a lot of transportation funding for the region. So we distribute about $270 million in transportation funding each year and this is through a couple of different funding selection processes. So we have our regional federal highway administration and federal transit administration project selection process. We also have a funding competition specifically for rural town centers and corridors as well as funding specific to special needs transportation. So that's kind of on our transportation side of things. I'm going to jump into Vision 2050. So this is our long-range plan for growth. It was adopted in October 2020, so at the time this is a 30-year plan, planning for 5.8 million people in our region in the year 2050. And it really follows many of the local priorities in many of our local communities. So developing and maintaining a healthy environment and creating thriving communities. It also has a strong emphasis on housing as well as climate. And then for this plan, there's also a large emphasis on equity too. So really having an understanding of who's living in our region now and in the future and what different needs are for different communities. So Vision 2050 is developed under this larger framework of planning in Washington State. So the state has a Growth Management Act. PSRC is the regional planning organization that develops this long-range plan, Vision 2050, which includes multi-county planning policies. And then counties and cities work together to set population and employment growth targets and policies to guide that growth. And then local jurisdictions prepare plans that are consistent with multi-county and countywide planning policies. And this is both to ensure consistency across these and fulfill those requirements of local plans, but also to ensure that our region is moving forward in a similar direction and that those kind of overarching goals and areas of emphasis at the regional level are also apparent in the local comprehensive plans. So we like to kind of think of this as our onion diagram where those local comprehensive plans really nest in the middle there. And then they loop back to PSRC because we then certify countywide planning policies and local plans. So I mentioned that this is our plan for growth. As you can see here, from 2020 to 2050, there's a projected growth of 1.5 million people in that four-county region as well as 1.1 million jobs. So a region has been growing and will continue to grow. So Vision 2050 is really a plan for where people are going to live and work into the future and how they'll get around and meet their daily needs. So some key policy themes that have really come from all of those conversations that have happened at the regional level, as I mentioned, are really similar to conversations at the local level too. So big emphasis on increasing housing choices and affordability, significantly reducing greenhouse gas emissions and a focus on climate change as well as protecting our network of open spaces we talked about, really ensuring that natural environment can continue to thrive and be an asset in our region. So the Vision 2050 includes a regional growth strategy. So this is really the plan for where people will live and work out to the year 2015. I know this map on here is quite small, but this map is our map of regional geographies. So the city of Snoqualmie is the lightest yellow color here. It's in our cities and towns category. We see a majority of growth going to metro core and high-capacity transit communities. So those are the ones in the darker orange colors and those are really areas that have existing or future light rail, commuter rail, bus rapid transit, ferry service that are really connected to that high-capacity transit network. And are anticipated to have more of that growth. So our previous plan iteration was Vision 2040, which was adopted prior to Vision 2050. In this plan, the big differences are that this plan is planning for more of that growth near transit, as I mentioned, that high-capacity transit system in our region. It also has more recognition of tribes in our region and the coordination with those tribes and their coordination throughout the planning process as well as the role of military installations. It has a new chapter on climate change to really emphasize the regional importance of mitigating climate change and resilience. And then, as I mentioned before, has more emphasis on housing and equity than our previous plan. So Vision 2050 was adopted in 2020 and currently at PSRC, we are working on the implementation of that plan. So the development of our regional housing strategy, we're currently developing a regional equity strategy and we have a lot of planning guidance that's either been published or in development in addition to our regional transportation plan and regional economic strategy in the teal there. But really why I wanted to show this is to show where the local comprehensive plan updates fit into this. So you can see that's the light green bar. So cities and counties are working on their plans now to be adopted in 2024 and we are working to support those plan updates. So to do that, to really translate what's in regional vision into what will eventually be the updates to local comprehensive plans, we've developed a plan review manual, which includes a checklist or consistency tool of all of the things that we're looking for when we're reviewing plans and to really highlight what the emphasis is in Vision 2050, what those regional goals have been highlighted to be. So I'll mention this consistency tool later on. It's a really useful resource, both in developing the plan update as well as on our end when we're going back and reviewing individual plans. So as I mentioned, there's a more emphasis on housing in our newest plan, really recognizing that it's a regional issue. So people in our region are moving from city to city to find housing that's affordable to them, that meets their needs and it, it's really spans across the city or county boundaries. And that housing access and affordability are tied to transportation. So if you need to live somewhere farther away to get to work, you may be spending more money on transportation or more time as well, as well as the environment, so how people are getting between places and their overall quality of life in the community around them. So there's a big emphasis on the plan, in the plan on creating a job-housing balance where people are able to live close to where they work and there aren't long transportation journeys in between them. And people have different options for where they live. So our regional housing strategy includes a variety of actions and tools that are really under three big umbrellas. So the first is supply. So that's really around building more housing of different types and having more housing that's available to people. The next is under stability. So this is providing opportunities for residents to live in housing that meets their needs. So both new residents or people moving, really having the housing that's the right fit for them as well as existing residents. So there's a lot of talk about mitigating displacement of existing communities in, in different areas of our region. And then the last category here is subsidy. So how can we create and sustain long-term funding sources to create and preserve that housing? So, and this is really focused at very low-income households and unhoused residents. So, and this is really focused at very low-income households and unhoused residents. So, as I mentioned before, we have these checklists that really translate what's in Vision 2050 into local plans. So, since the last plan update cycle, there have been changes to state law around housing. And our review of housing and local comprehensive plans has been modified to reflect these changes. So, many of those changes are highlighted in this housing checklist. And this is really where it shows what, how we're reviewing and what we're reviewing for and what we're hoping to see in local comprehensive plans. So, that was a lot of information kind of on what's in Vision 2050, and then what it looks like for local plans. This is really at the staff level. These three steps are how we hope to interact with local staff as they're developing and updating plans. So, at PSRC, we both want to ensure that plans are consistent with Vision 2050, but we also want to ensure that there are great plans in our region to continue to build our thriving communities. So, we really encourage working with our agency, all different steps throughout the planning process. So, during planning, envisioning, really understanding what's in Vision 2050 and in those consistency tools. So, we are always happy to come out to the city council meeting. So, thank you so much for having us today. I think this is a great example of this process here. And then, in the plan and policy development, this is where we have guidance and resource documents to really help guide what can be included in a plan. And then throughout the review and adoption process, PSRC is reviewing those plans, working with local staff to flag any issues or talk about anything that comes up in that review process. And then we bring it to our board who is, has the role of certifying plans. So, that was it on the kind of like technical, on the technical things. I'm going to talk a bit more about the resources and guidance we have. So, we've been hosting a Passport to 2044 series, which is a workshop series for, really, it's been focused on staff. So, this is planners and other staff at cities and counties, as well as consultants. We have had staff from transit agencies, as well as tribal governments in the states attend. And we've had a variety of different events. So, we've had one on housing, climate change, critical areas, transportation. We've been doing a lot of these webinars. Our first one we had in June 2022, this was our kickoff event. We had opening remarks by Deputy Mayor Tracy Buxton from the city of Des Moines. And we co-hosted this with the Washington State Department of Commerce and MRSC and had over 300 participants live at the event on the webinar. But as with all of these events, the recordings and presentations are all available on our website. So, so far, we've had nine of these events on various topic areas, and we've had over 1,000 people attend them. And the participants represent 80% of cities and counties in our region, which is a great number for us. It's really great to see mostly staff and planners really engaged at this work early on in the update to local comprehensive plans. We do have another one in February, specific to housing needing capacity, that will be with PSRC as well as the Washington State Department of Commerce. And then we are planning a session specific for elected officials and planning commissioners. So, a different audience, not focused on staff, but focused on elected officials. That will be later this spring. We'll make sure you all have information on it. But I think it will be a really nice session to talk about what's the role of elected officials in updating local plans, what are those regional priorities, and what do they look like at the local level? We also produced a number of guidance documents and resources. These are all available on our website. I will talk a little bit more about these. So, we have element guides, which help provide information on incorporating Vision 2050 into the local comprehensive plans and implement their policies and actions by providing guidance, best practices, and technical assistance. So, similar to our webinars, these are also really focused at the staff level, providing that assistance as those plans are being updated. And they have a lot of really good information in them, as well as links to other sources too. We also have guidance documents, which are more specific than those element guides. So, we have one on equitable engagement for comprehensive plans, which really talks about how to engage communities in a meaningful way, and then bring what you hear from communities back to elected leadership as that, as the plan is being worked on. So, how to really increase that community engagement and ensure different voices are heard throughout the community. And then there's also guidance on coordination with tribes in those local plans. And we have others available on our website. We also have a newsletter, which is a quarterly newsletter we launched in 2022. So, if you're really interested in this comprehensive planning work, I encourage you to subscribe to it. It highlights a variety of events we hold throughout the year, as well as news on new guidance documents we've been producing and other updates from us, as well as our partners around the state. So, lots of information in here. We also keep our old issues on our website. So, that's a great place to browse for those things. So, that is it for my presentation today. I am happy to open it up for any questions. And as I mentioned, Liz Underwood-Boltman is also with me and will be helping answer those.
Councilor, do we have any questions? Councilor Watton?
Thank you. Ms. Moore, thank you so much for presenting this. And I'll lead off. I'll probably be the toughest of the folks in the room. So, please bear with me. Growth Management Act gave the Department of Commerce the responsibility for setting the growth targets. The big concern is this. We simply don't have the capacity for the 2,36 units between North Bend and Snoqualmie to absorb that. And I balance that with the fact that we are committed as a community to find solutions to that. We have a workforce of nearly 10,000 employees, and 65% or more have to commute in. And this year, we've, we are adding 36 new units through a development we just approved, the mill site development. And I guess this is what it comes down to, is transit-oriented development is kind of the driving force behind affordable housing. And for us, without having the transportation element to it, we're kind of stuck. And I guess, you know, it turns back from our community responsibility to a regional responsibility, starting with King County, but statewide, is, it's far cheaper to put two buses on 18 than it is to build 10 units of housing. And I guess what I'm hoping for is, how do we mitigate that? How do we address it? It's not that we don't have the desire, it's just how do we get there sooner than later?
I'm happy to pop in. So, Liz Underwood-Boltman with the Puget Sound Regional Council. Thanks for your question. I just want to clarify a little bit and kind of some of the process about sort of how growth is kind of allocated between cities. So, the regional plan really does talk about trying to focus more of the growth where transit is, which is why Seattle, Bellevue, the bigger cities in King County are all sort of expected to accommodate more growth. But then there was a process at the King County level to split up growth between the cities. So, I think that really, that process really tried to focus on kind of like how much growth can a city expect? And what's an appropriate amount for that particular during this time period? So, it's a really, it's an important question. I mean, all of our cities have a growth target and sort of an expectation around accommodating growth into the future. And I do think this is a really great opportunity as part of the comp plan to sort of think and sort of ask those questions about kind of how best to do that. With the changes from in-state law around housing, I think there are, is a sort of new level of expectation around densities, or questions about sort of like how you actually go about doing that. So, we do encourage centers of all types in all communities, so downtowns, other sort of nodes where you can have higher densities and levels of growth. But that's really what you're asking is kind of the key question of the comp plan process. Like, how in your individual city can you accommodate the growth that we've, that you've identified as part from the King County process? So, it's a good question. And I don't know if I've got all the answers because it's really up to sort of, through the local process to help sort of figure out some of those things. But I think we do agree about sort of trying to focus more of the growth where there already are a lot of transportation options and services throughout the region.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Vincent?
Yeah, I think, I think you're right. It is a, it is a good question. It's a really good question. I think we all knew that it was a good question when he asked the question. And I, the only thing that I would tack on to his question is we have residents in our city who need to commute out and don't have, don't have Metro helping with that either. So, it's a, it's a kind of a two-way problem for us. We want to be able to accommodate more affordable housing, but then we also have residents that need to get to Seattle. And the state's working hard to get cars off the road. And we'd like some help from Metro on that as well. We've had people come to our council meetings saying, it takes me three hours to get to Seattle if I'm lucky. And that's a, that's a real limiting factor for folks in Snoqualmie as well. We do love being out in your nature, but there are challenges that come with it.
I would say that that's definitely recognized, especially in our cities that are kind of farther out from the core of the region. I would say that the comp planning process is a good opportunity to be coordinating with those transit providers and talking to them and really understanding what their plans are too, as you're allocating that growth throughout the city. Liz, do you have anything to add?
No, I think that's, that's a good point. We have an economic development element guide too, about sort of looking at the different types of employment opportunities and data for the, for cities too. But it's also, it's kind of a good central question around the comp plan process.
Councilor, do you have any other questions? Right. We really appreciate your presentation this evening, Maggie Moore and Liz Underwood-Boltman. Thank you for your time. And I think we do have the presentation, which we can actually send out to council members later on. So, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Right. Our second presentation this evening is the King County Solid Waste Division. City Administrator Mike Sarwin, would you please introduce our speaker?
Well, good evening, Your Honor, and members of the city council. This evening, we have a presentation from Patty Liu as the Program Manager for the King County Department of Natural Resources Parks and Solid Waste Division. And she's going to be giving you a presentation about King County's reprogram. And she'll explain what a reprogram is.
Could you also bring Amy Oclander into panelists as well, please? Thank you.
Hello. Hi, are you guys able to hear me?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Excellent. Let me share my screen. Okay. Hopefully you guys can see that, okay? First of all, thank you for having me. My name is Patty Liu. I am the Program Manager for the REPLUS program at the King County Solid Waste Division. First, I just want to apologize. I'm going to be blasting you guys with information. So, hopefully, hopefully you've had your caffeine and can absorb this. So, REPLUS is our new county program that is focused on improving waste diversion and recycling. I don't know if you can see the GIF that's playing over, but it kind of explains the name of REPLUS. Because all of the things that we want to do with REPLUS start with RE. You can recycle that piece of paper, reuse that water bottle, repair that bike, restore that piece of furniture, reduce your consumption, and rethink your purchasing habits in the first place. REPLUS is really a way to capture all of these RE words. So, before you throw that thing away, see if you can REPLUS it first. I think that GIF finally went. But here is the mission and vision statement for this program. REPLUS is our approach to reach the county's zero-waste of resources goal. About 70% of what gets thrown away every, every year is useful. It's cardboard, metal, food. These can all be put to better, more useful purposes than just going into a landfill. The goal of REPLUS is to minimize our environmental impacts by moving towards zero waste, while creating opportunities for everyone in King County to thrive. REPLUS is a call to action that incorporates goals highlighted in several county and city documents. In these documents, you'll see the goals of zero food waste to landfill by 2030, zero waste of resources by 2030 through reuse reduction and prevention efforts. This is included in County Code, the King County Cities Climate Collaboration, and the King County Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan, which was adopted by cities in 2019. In the King County Equity and Social Justice Strategic Plan, as we develop and implement REPLUS, we are addressing disproportionate burdens on our communities and creating equitable opportunities for people to benefit and participate in this program. So, I've mentioned 2030 a few times, and that is only seven years away. So, with REPLUS, we really have to start fulfilling these obligations now. We enlisted EMC Research to do a survey of residents to gauge how much they support the concept of REPLUS. So, this slide that you see shows that just hearing a brief introductory statement about REPLUS has strong support at 63%. You'll see that 80 or 8% oppose, and the rest needed more information before making a judgment. This next slide shows responses to more general prompts around waste prevention and reduction, which are actions we're undertaking with REPLUS. For example, the first one shows that 91% of people wanted harmonized recycling across our service area because currently what you can recycle is different depending on where you live, work, or play. And the second question shows, again, 91% support for enacting legislation and technologies to recycle more and reduce waste. So, across these eight questions, the low score was 67%, which is still very good. And then, this slide shows the jump in support for REPLUS after providing a few more details about specific actions. The takeaway here is that with just a few sentences, people seem to understand the program at a high level, and support jumped 26 points to 88%. So, before jumping into the program specifics of REPLUS, I wanted to give some context for this work. King County's 50-year history of waste management innovation includes establishing one of the nation's first curbside recycling programs, increasing diversion of construction and demolition materials, and the collection of yard waste. In 2018, we recycled 1 million tons versus throwing away 800,000 tons, which has led to one of the highest recycling rates in the United States at 54%. This is illustrative of the incredible work that the county and the cities have done in the past to address a very challenging problem. However, there are a few areas where we, the county, are lagging. Many cities collect garbage every week, but collect organics and recycling every other week. So, we're actually looking at flipping this around. Extended producer responsibility has been implemented in many European countries and states in the United States, and puts more responsibility on producers to increase recycling of their products. Washington is actually the only state on the West Coast that hasn't passed an EPR law. So, around 15, 15% of what gets thrown away is food. This is over 100,000 tons of food per year, which is entirely too much. So, although I just mentioned that 54, that our 54% recycling rate is good in comparison to other places in the United States, if you look at that graph, we've actually stagnated in our recycling performance. Our rate has been relatively flat over the past seven years. And if you actually go back 23 years, our average annual increase in the recycling rate is only 0.6%. So, this is a reminder that the last waste characterization study says that 78% of what is going into our landfill could actually have been recycled, repaired, or reused. So, we have a lot of work we need to do to reduce waste. And so, REPLUS is our program that provides the actions to get us out of this plateau. So, what does zero waste of resources look like? It's much less material going to the landfill. It's much less material going to the landfill, almost half a million tons less material. It's fewer trees being cut down each year to make paper. A portion of the food that is thrown away is still edible, and that's enough to feed 92,000 people in the region. REPLUS also means more jobs. REPLUS is a job growth engine because we need more people to collect materials, process materials, and build capital infrastructure. We could save disposal costs in the future. A decision hasn't been made about what to do after Cedar Hills Regional Landfill closes. But if it's waste export, then we save money on each ton we don't export, which is what this illustration shows. And finally, if we can harvest all of the plastic that gets thrown away, this could save 150,000 barrels of oil being burned each year. So getting into the specific actions of REPLUS, one of our major focuses is actually the categories of materials that are getting thrown away. Our biggest category of materials is organics. So that includes food, yard waste, and wood, which make up 28% of what goes into the landfill right now. The Organics Management Law was passed last year and is a comprehensive, a comprehensive organic.
Yeah, I'm giving a presentation.
Um, is a, it's a comprehensive organics management bill that would improve access to organics collection, strengthen food donation and rescue the state, and support end markets for compost. This bill will also help increase organics collection for commercial entities like restaurants, cafeterias, malls. And many of these businesses currently do not collect their food waste separately. So it all goes into the trash, which represents a major opportunity for improvement. The Organics Management Law also requires businesses to divert organic waste through a phased-in basis starting in January 1st of next year. And then by January of 2025, 20% of edible food must be recovered for feeding the food insecure. Another area of focus for food waste is single-family residences throughout King County. We're currently conducting outreach to help determine what actions to take. But some of these options could include requiring all curbside garbage customers to subscribe to organic service. It could include implementing a food waste ban, much like what the county has in place for yard waste. And then something like reducing garbage collection to every other week. And then last on this slide is non-residential food waste recycling. As mentioned earlier, the Organics Management Law will start to require businesses to separate out their food waste from the garbage. So this action is about figuring out how to recycle this food waste, whether that's through composting or through another method like anaerobic digestion. And then on policy strategy, King County can't direct where the separated food waste goes for recycling. We only have flow control over garbage. So this is about cities setting the policy of where the food waste should go. Cities could, in their contract, direct the hauler to pick up this food waste to go to a particular processor. But again, that, that decision is up, up to folks like you. And then on pricing strategy regarding this, because processing recyclables is an open market, the price to processes food waste has to be competitive with other processors in the area, such as those that currently accept food waste for composting. Another big focus area of materials is on paper and plastic. Extended Producer Responsibility or EPR could take the burden off of residences with clear recycling indicators and requiring that businesses and brands pay for the recycling of their packaging. It creates incentives for those producing packaging to make it recyclable. An EPR bill being introduced this year called the RAP Act also includes establishing a deposit return system and recycled content minimums. Second on this slide is mixed waste processing. It's a last screen for recyclables in the waste stream that's left after people have separated out their recycling into their blue bins. So although our focus is on separating recyclables in our homes and businesses to create a cleaner recyclable stream, which should lead to higher prices for those materials, we understand that not everything is easy to sort. There's a lot of confusion out there. So technologies exist that use conveyor belts, robots, cameras, et cetera, to screen out what is the recyclables that are still being thrown away. And then we also have NextCycle Washington, which is an accelerator program and networking platform for organizations and businesses diverting materials and using recycled materials in manufacturing. So we want to harness all of that smart entrepreneurial talent in Washington State to innovate on ways to increase waste prevention and recycling. So in collaboration with ecology, commerce, and Seattle Public Utilities, and with the support of community partners, we have launched this accelerator program modeled on similar low-carbon programs. We recently had our first round completed earlier in 2022. But this will be an ongoing thing that'll, that'll open pretty regularly. The King County Solid Waste Division has also set aside $2 million for a competitive grant program, the REPLUS Circular Economy Grants. And it's open to private nonprofit and public entities to support waste prevention and diversion. Community, businesses, and NGOs are, have welcomed our focus on innovation and providing funding opportunities. So for this program, we received over 48 applicants for the grants last year. And the recipients of this grants will be announced later this year. So this is a, a grant program that we plan to refresh every biennium. And then our third category is not a material, but it is still an important focus. So per our equity and social justice mission, we are trying to better incorporate the community in the development and execution of REPLUS. We've been meeting with a community panel of 10 members to identify their priorities and attitudes on this program and what we should focus on in the future. For the city grant proposal, this is a separate pool of funding available only to our city partners to implement waste reduction and recycling actions. The aim is to launch this in the current year, this year. So we will meet with city recycling coordinators to, to develop this grant program. And then lastly on the slide is city-county collaboration. Starting, we're starting backup meetings with city recycling coordinators to increase collaboration and messaging around waste prevention and recycling. So as you can see from this slide, these actions have a pretty big impact on diversion and greenhouse gas reductions. Potentially 400,000 tons of waste diverted to better use is a very impressive number. Reducing greenhouse gas or metric tons of carbon dioxide by 300,000 is equivalent to reducing emissions from a car driving 744 million miles. And just to give context, that is the distance that gets us almost to Saturn from Earth. There are things to consider, though. It takes money to implement these actions, capital investments, staff to provide assistance to cities and businesses, et cetera. So rates are likely to increase. One thing to note is that residents see the largest drop in their garbage bill when they move to smaller bin sizes. So as people adjust their behavior, they may be able to offset increases in rates by moving to a smaller garbage can. REPLUS will also require behavior change. Businesses and people need to start sorting out their waste more. A good example is with food waste, as discussed earlier, where businesses will now have to put their organic spins in their spaces to collect food waste, which means their customers need to know what goes in what bin. As actions are implemented, more green jobs will be needed to process the increase in recycling and will need people to collect and process materials. So we will see an increase in jobs in the region. So almost done here. I know that was a lot of information, but this is some information from that survey I discussed earlier. This shows the level of support for those REPLUS actions I just talked about. You can see really high support. The lowest is at 75% for all of the actions. This really highlights that residents in King County care about preventing and reducing their waste and are supportive of new actions to achieve this. So that does it for my presentation. I want to thank you for your time. My information is on this slide in case any questions come up afterwards. But Amy Ocklerlander, who's also on the call, she's here to help answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Patty Liu. Council, do we have any questions regarding this program? Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, it, I have found that it is really, really hard to find factual information from trusted sources about waste, whether it's stuff that's supposed to go to the landfill, stuff that can be recycled, stuff that could be recycled, but we don't recycle it for whatever reason, and composting, et cetera. For example, can we recycle styrofoam or not? Some sources that I would trust say yes. Some sources that I do not trust say yes. And same place versus, some sources I trust say no, some say yes. That's just a simple question. Can I recycle styrofoam or not? But it's not simple because there are many different kinds of styrofoam. And then it gets really blurry. And that's just one example. I mean, someone who I don't necessarily trust is a factual source on this specific topic, but who is nonetheless a very well-educated person, recently told me that the only things that actually get recycled are aluminum cans. And actually, everything else you put in the blue bin gets taken out to the landfill. I don't know if that's true or not. I, I, I hope it isn't. But point being that there is a significant amount of misinformation out there. You know, and it's, it's really quite the epidemic. And I'm certainly guilty of not being as well-informed as I should like because I don't know who I should trust. For information. So here's what I want to know is, what can our city do to better inform our residents about what they can and cannot recycle, what they can and cannot put in their compost bin, et cetera, so that we don't have to go back and say, oh, no, actually, you can't do that because of this? How do we get to something we can give our residents that would encourage them to actually participate meaningfully? And that would be true?
That's a great question. And first, I want to validate what you're experiencing, like, you know, solid waste, recycling, garbage, like, that's my job. And sometimes I am still confused about what can be recycled. So I hear you. That's a huge problem. I think one thing that we can do, and Amy can probably speak more about this, is really as a region in King County, just making our messaging around what can be recycled more uniform. So that's going to involve working with our haulers and the materials recovery facilities on accepting materials on a uniform basis. So what can be recycled in Snoqualmie is the same as what can be recycled in Kent, the same as what can be recycled in Bellevue. I think that could reduce a lot of the confusion because currently what you can recycle in all three cities is different. So ideally, we could have that on a statewide level where everything, curbside recycling, everything that can go in there is the same anywhere you are in the state. But if we can start with King County, I think that's a good first step. I want to invite Amy and see if she has anything to add.
Thank you, Patty. And I'm having kind of connection issues, so forgive me for having my camera off. But to the council member's point and Patty's comments about recycling not being harmonized, that's one of the things that we want to work on with county and city collaboration. Every city that has collection services in King County has a different contract and there's multiple different haulers. And those contracts, while many of them are very similar, they have different standards. So one of the things that we're doing as a county is starting to develop a, what we're calling a city scorecard. And that's looking at not just what each of our city contracts state as far as recycling, composting, et cetera, and collections, but also what folks are doing to get to a zero waste, a zero waste future. And once we have all of that information together, it's, it'll definitely help us work with cities to harmonize those standards as contracts expire or contracts have to be reopened for negotiation for certain purposes. Another thing cities can do to help, I sent it out to the city administrator, but I don't believe it was near Hackett. And that is, we're asking cities to sign a REPLUS pledge. And that really is just acknowledging the high-level goals that we all share in reducing waste. And also, I think helps get the word out that, you know, recycling does work. I can tell you that the plastic does not end up in the landfill. There's plenty that does. But there is tons that ends up completely recycled. In fact, some of us in the county took a tour in Canada last year where some of our Washington State plastic goes to be recycled. But there is a lot of misinformation and part of that collaboration is harmonizing those standards as well as making sure that we're all communicating and on the same page to reduce that confusion and increase those recycling and composting rates.
Excellent. Thank you. Council, do you have any other questions? See, Councilor Watten?
I guess two things come to mind. One is when you have different-sized cities, and Amy can appreciate this, different-sized cities, what you're able to accomplish is very different than the metropolitan areas. And I think what would be helpful for us to know is, you know, we can't address all of it, but for our size of a city, what are the things that are most doable that we can make an impact on? And I'm thinking food waste and food digesters, which I know nothing about other than it looks really darn cool, is, is, you know, where is that easy win for us? Because you can't take the entire elephant at the same time. You have to take pieces of it.
Yeah, I mean, as, as a city, you'll have to analyze your situation and figure out those leverage points. What's the easiest to accomplish? But the county is offering up support, you know, with, with Snoqualmie's support of REPLUS, what we can offer in exchange is technical assistance for your, for your businesses, your food-oriented businesses to help them comply with the Organics Management Law. I have this dream of kind of setting up a coalition of cities to kind of work out your hauler contracts so that we can harmonize recycling lists. So those are, those are things that the county, the county can provide as, because I know, yeah, resources, resources are limited. So we want to do what we can to ensure success for everyone. But I think, yeah, if Amy has anything to add, as, as very knowledgeable about a small city, I think, I think she could have some insight here.
Yeah, happy to add on to that. You know, I think sometimes we think small cities are, smaller cities, it's more difficult to get more wholesale change. In a situation like this, since the county is the one that actually collects all of our waste at the landfill and we have haulers, it really is up to the cities what, what the cities want to do. There is a lot of low-hanging fruit, and depending on when your next hauler contract comes up, a lot of times those changes can be automatically built into the RFP process. There's of course lots of staff work that needs to go along with any changes. But a lot of the, you know, wouldn't be asking a city to create their own digester. That's something that the county does. So really, a lot of the city work ends up being that low-hanging fruit that you're talking about, Councilmember Watten. That's relatively simple once you get it going. And I would be more than happy to have conversations outside this meeting to explore those options further with you.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
So I'd like to break your question into two. So as we, as we work into the process, we're talking here, we'll get into discussions of contract. And with the major haulers, waste manager republic, there's not really that many. And some of these, some of these changes will come down through them to us. Those are our partners directly on the street who collect our stuff. Some years ago, we went through and revamped that contract and did instantiate in it significant recycle and yard waste and other items in there. So look forward to hearing the scorecard as we go through that. I think we should do okay. But I would like to take the action back to Parks and Public Works that we did, what we discussed with our current partner, Waste Management, better definitions of what goes in recycle, what goes in yard waste, what goes in garbage, and maybe do some communication out to the community on what the current standard is. Waiting for this progression to come that we're talking tonight. I will say that the one guy that really gets the vote is the guy that picks up my garbage. And when I put the styrofoam in, he puts it in my garbage and gives it back to me. So there may be some more discussion to have with Waste Management in regards to maybe some communication on their side, too.
Perhaps at Parks and Public Works, do you want to also take a look at the pledge? Review that?
That probably should go through. Yeah.
Okay. Great. Do you guys have any, Council, any other questions? Great. Well, we really appreciate Patty Liu and Amy Ocklerlander for the presentation and learning more about REPLUS. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. All right. Let's see, the final business under appointments, presentations, proclamations is AB 23-011, proclamation mentoring month. So every January, the mentoring movement unites in celebration of National Mentoring Month and uses the power of its collective voice to recruit new mentors, advance the mentoring field's legislative priorities, and drive meaningful change for young people. So whereas January 23 will mark the 21st anniversary of National Mentoring Month, an annual campaign to focus attention on the need for mentors, as well as each of us can work together to increase the number of mentors to ensure positive outcomes for our young people. And whereas the City of Snoqualmie honors volunteer mentors who support young people by showing up for them every day, demonstrating their commitment to helping them thrive. And whereas mentoring programs like Youth Success, mentoring, a program of Empower Youth Network makes our communities and our state stronger by driving impactful relationships that increase social capital for young people and provide invaluable support networks. And whereas students who meet regularly with their mentors are more than 52% less likely than their peers to skip a day of school, and youth who face an opportunity gap but have a mentor are 55% more likely to be enrolled in college than those who did not have a mentor. And whereas National Mentoring Month is a time of year to celebrate, elevate, and encourage mentoring across our state and recruit caring adult mentors in the City of Snoqualmie. Now therefore, I, Catherine Ross, Mayor of the City of Snoqualmie and Snoqualmie City Council, do hereby proclaim January 23 as National Mentoring Month in the City of Snoqualmie. And I did abbreviated portion of the proclamation, you can see the full proclamation online. And joining us tonight is, to accept the proclamation, is Kathy Highland, Program Manager with Empower Youth Network. Ms. Highland, would you like to say a few words this evening?
Yes, I want to say thank you to everybody on the council and all of the city. We greatly appreciate it. I'm the Program Coordinator for Youth Success Mentoring with Empower Youth. And I challenge everybody in the room to spread the word to five people you know that we need mentors. We are in particular need right now of male mentors, as well as BIPOC mentors and bilingual mentors for Spanish and English. We have a real need, the program is growing, we've had three referrals just this week of kids coming in and our social work team at FPFD has given us the heads up that there's going to be more coming in the next month. So we are really, really looking for mentors. I'm trying to turn over every rock we can find. So thank you very much. If anybody has questions about mentoring, I'd be glad to answer them.
Council, do you have any questions regarding the program? We do not, we really appreciate your joining us this evening and discussing and talking about the mentorship program. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
You, too.
Thank you. At this time, we will provide time for residents to comment on items not on the agenda, a few ground rules. Snoqualmie residents who are not present have the right to have their elected officials perform their duties on behalf of the city in an efficient and orderly manner. Therefore, comments will be limited to three minutes. Please wait to recognize and state your name and city of residence for the record, direct your comments to council as a whole and not to individual members. And please note that this is not a time to ask questions with council, mayor, or staff, or to engage in debate. And last, please respect the decorum of these proceedings as all due respect will be afforded to you. So without, would anyone like to speak to any concern that is not on the agenda this evening? If so, please raise your hand in the council chambers or online. I'm not seeing anyone in the council chambers raise their hands. Nor am I seeing anyone online. All right. So now we move on to the consent. Agenda contains approval of the city council meeting minutes, December 12, 2022, regular meeting. Claims approval reports dated January 9, 2023. AB 23-002, amending agreement with the RH2 Engineering for Services during construction. AB 23-04, Contract Agreement LDC for Missing Middle and Building Lands Analysis. AB 23-006, Resolution Number 1632, Ratifying Emergency Proclamation, 22-21A. And AB 23-013, Interlocal Agreement with South County Fire Training Consortium. Is there motion to approve the consent agenda?
To move?
Second. It's moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and seconded by Councilmember Christiansen. Is there any discussion? Councilperson Johnson?
The only question I have was about AB 23-006. Would the actual expenditure amount come back for us for ratification? Or would that expenditure amount be automatically approved, even though we're not sure exactly how much it is?
This is based on the value. We'll ask. Parks, Public Works Director, Chambliss?
So those expenditures would come before you as part of the warrants. We can make sure we call it out that that's in there when that package comes through for you.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
Well, just, I guess clarification, warrants is approval to pay. If no other action, that assumes that you're covering this within your existing budget allocation. If, if that is a false statement, then there needs to be another revision to the budget for, to adjust your allocation. Those are two separate.
Correct. Correct. And if we need to request appropriation, we will at that time. We're still pulling together.
Yeah.
Numbers, so I don't know whether we're talking appropriation level or we can absorb.
We'll cover that a little bit. Any other comments? Seeing none? Moving on to vote, all those in favor, CI?
Aye.
Any opposed name? Okay, the ayes have it and the consent agenda is approved. Moving on, the next item is AB 23-005, Amending Snoqualmie Municipal Code Chapters 14.30, 14.40, 17.35, 17.80. This is the first reading of the ordinance 1273. Councilperson Johnson, would you please read the summary?
Several draft code amendments were introduced at the Planning Commission beginning in fall of 2022, identifying opportunities in the Snoqualmie Municipal Code to clarify, simplify, and enhance permit processing in the areas of historic design review, landmarks, and design review. The draft amendments include project permit processing procedures. What do you call that consonance in poetry? Anyway, for all permit types. It was, it was four Ps in a row. Snoqualmie Landmark Designation Criteria, Landmark Nomination Procedures, Landmark Related Definitions, Thresholds for Historic Design Review, and a new permit type site plan permit. Other draft code amendments set a time and date for receiving appeals of historic design review decisions. So, Council, this was, oh, sorry.
Councilperson Johnson?
Thank you. Yeah, this has been sort of a long time coming when it comes to the Historic Design Review Board. I'm sure that Councilmember Christiansen remembers many discussions on the Planning Commission with me with that regard and also Councilmember Lasse as well previously. It's been a source of frustration every time it comes up because the, the code isn't as clear currently as we might like for what our exact powers were and what their powers are as the Planning Commission acting in place of the Historic Design Review Board, since we don't actually have a separate Historic Design Review Board. At any rate, yeah, so it's about just clarifying some of those things and maybe taking some of the things that are currently for the Historic Design Review Board that we're kind of jamming up the process that maybe don't actually need that level of review, that it's all right for just the department to just take care of it. I can give you a few examples where, and they're in there as well, of times when I think that would have been appropriate rather than it needing to go through the Planning Commission. And let's see, oh, and then the site plan permit. This, this gets slightly outside of my wheelhouse of expertise, more into maybe Councilmember Lasse's for exactly what, what that would be and why that's an important thing to be done. But my understanding is it essentially gives that, that first initial, okay, we've, we've looked at this and it seems like we're okay to go forward. And I wonder if perhaps either Mr. Rogers or Community Development Director Artete want to come up and give any further background on what this bill is about?
And before I do that, do you want to see if there's any public comment on this item? And so please understand that the comment must be related to this agenda bill or ordinance. And let me your comments to two minutes. And so is anyone in City Hall or online, please raise your hand? I'm not seeing anyone. All right, so yes, if our Director of Community Development and Senior Planner Rogers, if you have any comments regarding this, can lead us through it?
Good evening, Jason Rogers with the Community Development Department. And let me put this up so you can see. Thanks, Carson. Let me throw this up so you can see it. That looks weird. There we go. So I think the Chair of the CD Committee, you know, he read in the summary, so that so, and you have the table of changes in the agenda bill so you can see, you know, in fairly great detail what is being proposed to change. When we're talking about Historic Design Review Permit Procedures, this is a chart, several of you probably recognize something similar from a few years ago when we were talking about subdivision procedures. I've drawn one back up for how we do Historic Design Review currently. So this is, and I apologize, it's not as readable as maybe I hoped, but we have three types of Historic Design Review. And so this first one, this type one is reviewed by, by staff, by the director. And you can see on the right, it talks about what kinds of projects that might be. The, if somebody were to appeal that, that appeal would be heard by the, in this case, the Planning Commission sitting as the Historic Design Review Board. The type two and three decisions are made by the Planning Commission sitting as the Historic Design Review Board. Appeals here get a little tricky because we have, as most of you know, hopefully all of you know, the landmark district downtown. And so any appeals of Historic Design Review Decisions for projects within the landmark district would go to the Snoqualmie Landmarks and Heritage Commission. This is a commission that is by code, the King County Landmarks and Heritage Commission with a special Snoqualmie member who formerly has been Dave Batty, the Valley historian. He has, of course, moved out of the valley in the last few years. We don't presently have a member appointed. The good news is we haven't had to use this commission. I honestly can't remember the last time we had to use this commission. For appeals outside the landmark district, the city council currently hears those appeals. And again, you can see the types of projects we're talking about, although I understand it's hard to read up there. You know, type twos are things like building additions, new construction, permanent signs. What the ordinance is proposing to do, you can see all the changes highlighted in yellow here. So a couple of things we're changing is we're, we're trying to really narrow this in and streamline it. We're also trying to shift appeals to the city's hearing examiner. And so what you see there for a type one appeal, instead of going to the Planning Commission sitting as the Historic Design Review Board, they would go to the hearing examiner. We're also looking within this ordinance and the Planning Commission recommended this change to shift which types of projects are being reviewed at which level. So the major changes here, permanent signs would shift from a type two up to a type one, building additions for non-contributing buildings. So within the landmark district, there are a number of buildings that are considered contributing to the landmark district. And then there's other buildings which are non-contributing. So if somebody wants to add an addition onto a non-contributing building, we would review that now at the staff level instead of with the board. Additions to contributing buildings would remain with the Historical Design Review Board. And then you can see, we also take away that split of appeals. All the appeals would go to the hearings, to the hearing examiner here. Now, and I don't want to mischaracterize the CD Committee's discussion here, but one thing that the CD Committee discussed quite extensively at their meeting was about appeals for things involving a little more discretion or judgment. And so that's why you see in your packet, this additional draft ordinance. And the changes in there are highlighted as well, so you can more easily pick them out. What we came up with is there's a, there's a process within Historical Design Review for a variance. So if somebody wants to, say, build a brand new building and they don't like a particular design standard that's within that, they can ask for a variance. There's a process for it. Right now, it is a decision for the Historical Design Review Board. That decision would essentially be appealable under the current code, depending on, if I step back to this slide here, it would follow the process for whatever type of review it happens to be. So under the proposed changes here, the, the, the Planning Commission would review and make a decision on the variance. And then if there is an appeal of that variance and the underlying project that goes with it, that would go to the hearing examiner. The committee and certainly, you know, you could describe it in more detail, I think, you know, was interested in, when, when we're talking about these permits that involve, you know, a variance from the code, that's, that maybe that's something the council should consider because you are the elected officials ultimately. So that's why you have this extra exhibit attached to the agenda bill tonight. And certainly, I'm happy to answer questions about that, help support your conversation, and certainly bring things up on the screen if needed. Thank you.
So there were two options then, right? There was one that was presented by staff and then there was a preference, one that was recommended by community development.
Right.
On the variance portion of it.
Right.
Councilor Mayhew?
Yeah, sorry, I'm confused. I thought there was a proposal from the Planning Commission. I didn't realize this was a staff proposal. Is this not a Planning Commission proposal?
So from a process standpoint, the, the staff recommended a set of changes to the Planning Commission. The commission reviewed those changes and then adopted a recommendation to the city council, which mirrors what the staff recommendation was and, and remains. So that's what you see in your packet as the proposed ordinance, ordinance 1273. In addition, there is the sep, based on the CD Committee's discussion, there is another version of the ordinance in there and with some highlighted changes.
Councilperson Johnson?
And then I do think that staff made one more slight change, but I believe they had the, the consent of the Planning Commission for that, that small change. Am I remembering that, remembering that correctly?
Yes.
Yeah.
The one minor, there's a one minor strike through we made because we, we didn't really left something in that should have been, it was a change that was proposed that ultimately didn't get adopted, so we removed it. Except we didn't remove it. So now it's, now it's gone.
Any other questions or discussion regarding this? Councilperson Johnson?
So then for the proposed action, to make clear what it is that we would be adopting which version, would it be appropriate for the, the motion, I don't know if you could pull the agenda bill back up there and go down to the proposed action? So would it be for the January 23 meeting, would it be appropriate to say something like move to approve ordinance such and such, adopting amendments, blah, 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 of the Snoqualmie Municipal Code? And then just add at the end, as recommended by the Planning Commission and Community Development Committee, so that we're encapsulating the changes that, or not changes, but the amendments as proposed by the Planning Commission, as well as those that were proposed by the Community Development Committee? Or what's the best way to encapsulate that we would want all of that?
So I, I think from a procedural standpoint, you have the ordinance, let me scroll up here. You have this exhibit, oops, excuse me, exhibit one to the agenda bill of the ordinance 1273. That reflects the Planning Commission's recommendation. So we staff can't alter that, except for a minor typo, only the council can by motion make an amendment to that proposed ordinance before adoption, if the council does adopt it. So you, the council would need, somebody would need to make a motion with second to amend the proposed ordinance with the changes. We can draw that up for you, you know, just exactly what to say in a specific exhibit, if that is the, if there's a desire for that, or if the council wants us to do that. if that is the, if there's a desire for that or if the council wants us to do that.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah. Move to do that.
Second.
Move, just so this is clear in the minutes. Move to amend ordinance 1273 to include the CD proposed amendments.
Second.
Just moved by Councilor Johnson, second by Councilor Lissay.
Point of order.
I think there's a second version of 1273 in the packet that includes the CD Committee changes. I think that's what Ms. Artetche was just about to say.
So we've prepared it, made it very simple for you to see the original PC recommended version, which is your exhibit two. And then your exhibit four is the PC recommended version with the one modification, straightforward modification from staff. And it also includes the CD Committee recommended changes. So everything.
So does this, but the motion they just made would adopt number four?
Correct.
So Councilor Lissay?
Yeah, so the discussion amongst council is then that what we're recommending from the CD Committee is to only move forward with the version that includes the CD Committee modifications, that we don't move forward with the other version. So which really is only amending the appeals portion so that appeals on items that are variances or deviations from the code would be appealed to council, not to the hearing examiner.
Councilor Mayhew?
I just want to get clarity. I don't believe there's any motion tonight. This is a first read of an ordinance, isn't that correct?
That's correct. Oh, okay.
Not motion to approve, though.
Right, it's just updating the motion.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other, Councilor Lissay?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we get it clear. And I want Bob to nod his head because I always like that when that happens. What we've done, what this motion does is it essentially removes Attachment one and only goes forward with Attachment four.
Exhibit four, correct. That's correct. And Exhibit four will be before the council. I mean, assuming you move dispense with first reading tonight, Exhibit four will be before the council on second reading.
Yep.
At your next reading.
Excellent, that was the intent. Thank you.
Great. All those in favor of that, adding that Exhibit four, using that as a motion rather than the original one? Say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, ayes have it. And we will, when we bring it back, January 23rd, that will be, Exhibit four will be what we will be voting on then.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there, moving on, is there any report for Public Safety Committee?
Um, there is, I guess, the one thing that we talked about other than the agreement for fire going forward was just the fantastic job that police and the fire department did throughout the storms administration as well. There were a lot of significant hurdles and we thought that they did a great job.
Thank you. Any report from Community Development?
No report.
Okay, the first committee report for Parks and Public Works is AB 23-001, Resolution Awarding a Contract for the Kimball Creek Lift Station Improvements. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, would you please read the summary and motion?
So this agenda bill seeks adoption of Resolution 1633, awarding the Kimball Creek Lift Station Improvement Project to Peas and Sons. Excess flow cycling and spikes from Kimball Creek Lift Station create inefficiencies in the Water Reclamation Facility, WRF. The Kimball Creek Lift Station Improvements will replace one of the three pumps and upgrade all electrical gear to provide more efficient operations at the waste reclamation facility. Take it down here. Move to adopt Resolution 1633, awarding the Kimball Creek Lift Station Improvements to Peas and Sons Incorporated and authorize the mayor to sign. May I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Councilor Benson, to approve AB 23-001. Is there any public comment regarding this item? So please raise your hand. Not seeing anyone in the chambers nor anyone online. So Chair, did you want to introduce it then?
Yep. So the reason I don't have on this consent is nothing else, it's a million dollars. I'm a little weary of doing consent for a million dollars. But some background, this is one of the projects that was combined into the overall waste reclamation facility project that is currently in our CIP plan. When it was initially a standalone project some years ago, it was at about 1.2 million dollars. With this action and the action that we did under consent, this will make it at about 1.4 million dollars. Given the, the cost changes in the last couple of years, that is not, that is reasonable to have that escalation go through. Of note, the contract is at present below engineer's estimate, the latest estimate of what we thought it would take to do this. Contract also went through competitive bid process. Multiple bidders replied, this is the lowest responsive bidder. Again, below engineering estimate of what the current bid should be. As such, well, and also the project costs is within the budget for the waste reclamation facility as defined in our CIP program. So with that, the committee recommendation is that we go ahead and approve this as it seems to tick all the appropriate checkboxes going through the process.
All right. Any discussion? Councilor Benson?
One other thing that was encouraging to me was that all of the bids that we received were very close to one another. There wasn't a disparity in the bids. They were, which just, you know, makes it seem, you know, very up and up.
Great. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? So the motion passes unanimously and we adopt Resolution 1633, awarding the Kimball Creek Lift Station Improvements to Peas and Sons Incorporated. Is there any further report for Parks and Public Works Committee?
No further report.
Right. Moving on, next committee report is Finance Administration. And this is the 2023 meeting schedule. Councilor Mayhew, do you want to read the summary?
Yeah, point of order?
Yes.
Just want to clarify, under Robert's Rules of Order or how we're, there was some confusion in a training course recently. I just want to be clear. If the maker of motion intends to vote against it, should they not be the person making the motion or is that permissible?
I'd do it.
I think the maker of motion would vote if you, yeah, right. But I'm asking you to make the motion, Matt, just asking you to read the summary.
No, well, to follow.
Your Pro Tim Holloway?
The Chair of the Committee, whether or not he or she agrees with the motion, should represent the committee and make the motion. When we get into discussion, the Chair can voice both the committee position and their own position as part of open discussion. But as Chair, you should, you should make the motion to introduce it.
Sorry, I had a point of order, I'm waiting for an answer.
It's permissible for the maker of the motion to vote against the motion.
Thank you. The purpose of this agenda bill is to review the 2023 council and committee meeting schedule and cancel the list of meetings on the screen. If there, if a regular council meeting is canceled, there may be a need to hold a special meeting to bring forward one or more items. Meetings must be noticed pursuant to council rules of procedure in the Open Public Meetings Act. If adopted, the city clerk will distribute an updated 2023 meeting schedule with the approved changes. Move to adopt the 2023 council and committee meeting schedule as proposed.
Sir, a second?
Second.
So it's moved by Councilor Mayhew and second by Councilor Walton, to adopt the 2023 council and committee meeting schedule. So, Councilor Benson?
Hey, is it just me or do we have one missing?
Point of order.
Go ahead and state your point.
Do we not first take public comment and then do we not have the committee chair speak first?
Yes, we do. So is there any public comment regarding this item? Anyone raise your hand online or in the chambers? Seeing none? Continue. Councilor Mayhew?
Yeah, just to share with the council at committee, we thought that this discussion was appropriate to go straight to the council for discussion by the full council. There wasn't any real discussion of this other than that this was appropriate just to come forward to all of us. So the committee doesn't have a recommendation one way or the other, just that this was appropriate for all of us to think about.
I can go through the dates on here. So cancellations, May 27th would be following the weekend of a council retreat, which we'll be actually be talking about shortly.
Mayor, did you mean March 27th?
Yes, I did, thank you. And then July 3rd and 5th, there's a holiday right in the center of it. And so we thought potentially canceling the committee meetings then and then the following council meeting on July 10th. And then August 21st and 22nd, council committee meetings and August 28th, city council meetings. And then the December meetings, as we did, we have been doing each year, the last council committee meetings and council meeting. And what this provides is, you know, council members and city staff to be able to plan and allows our staff to work on projects and get caught up as well as people can plan their vacations around this time. And there are other cities that actually take the whole month of August off. So what we've done is kind of spread it off between two different months, so. Any discussion? Your Pro Tim Holloway?
So I guess I disagree. There are seven of us up here. If we take vacations or whatever, we are, we trust the rest of the council to perform as needed if there is a quorum. Additionally, as we did last week, where there's a holiday that interrupts the schedule, we shift things to adjust to that, but we keep going. Should have met Monday, Tuesday last week, we met Tuesday, Wednesday. Sorry, but it's kind of the bill you signed up for when you said I wanted to be a council member to do these kind of things. I think it's a pullback of what we signed up to do to say we're going to take July and August off right up front. We can counsel, we can cancel meetings if we have no agenda at any time. Okay? But I don't think we should presume that. And we should depend on each other to carry on through when we go to Mexico and have significant quantities of alcohol. Okay? Or thereabouts. So that, just my opinion, I disagree with the presumption of taking the summer off.
Councilor Lissay?
Yeah, I'm on the same path as, what am I supposed to call you now? Councilmember Holloway? I know you like that better. You know, we can't, we can't presume the future. And our council rules and procedures set the, set the schedule for the year. It defines council meetings as the second and fourth Mondays. It cannot pronounce as committee meetings on those first and third weeks of the month. We have meetings when they're necessary, we shift them when there's a holiday. To presume in advance for the year what's going to happen in August or December, I think is an incorrect action. We can cancel those at any time. We don't need to pass an agenda bill to define this. It's defined already in our council rules and procedures. I'd encourage everyone to just, let's just vote no on this and we have our schedule already established already.
Any other comments? Your Pro Tim Holloway?
I guess I do want to ask one near term issue, though. As we do have a council retreat coming up, I do, we're voting, do we want to go ahead and at least narrow this down? Maybe just to say the March 27th at this stage is council given, is canceled, given the expected time involvement of the weekend for the retreat?
Councilor Lissay?
I think we make that decision when it's time to make that decision. Maybe we have a late snowmageddon this year and we have to pass an emergency ordinance. Maybe we find out from our excellent budget staff and newly, newly added budget staff and our, you know, all of our folks that something has to be handled because we found out last minute that there's a deadline at the end of March and we have to take action. We can, we can decide that at the first March meeting that we want to cancel it and still meet the obligations of our roles as council members. I don't think we need to do it now. I think we do it when we know, when we're closer to it and we know for sure.
Councilor Walton?
Well, may I be the lone voice to say, I can understand having this in place for the sake of the staff that's involved?
No, because I'm going to join you.
Okay, all right. You're not supposed to interject. Thank you. So I'm voting in favor.
Councilor Christiansen?
I was going to say that while I do agree with what council members, Lissay and Holloway say, generally speaking, I do think that it is reasonable to pull a couple dates back in order to allow staff the chance to plan for holidays. For example, I do think that canceling July 3rd and 5th is reasonable given that we have a holiday that's in the middle of the week. And I do think it's reasonable to take March 27th off. I do have hesitations about removing the rest of the dates, although it's my understanding that council does typically cancel a number of the meetings around the December holiday season. So I, well, again, I'm not comfortable with taking all the days. I do think it is reasonable to consider taking some of them off. And I would support that.
Councilor Benson?
Well, I was just going to say, I can't, I can't imagine having a Public Safety Committee meeting on July 3rd or a Parks and Public Works meeting on 5th. Those guys have work to do. So I, you know, and, you know, December 26th, am I going to be here? You know, it's, I, is that, maybe, maybe that's the compromises to find, what are the obvious ones? And maybe at least, there are, there are a lot of people that are, that are, their, their plans are held in check because of the schedule. And yes, I agree that, you know, the first and third week and the second and fourth week, it's, it's, it's in there, but I think also understood is that there are holidays on the calendar most years.
Your Pro Tim Holloway?
So I'm going to take the opportunity to discuss the staff issue. I think we as a council should have an expectation that the department heads are able to represent their departments, to carry out the function of those departments in engaging with the committees, engaging with council. If administration wants to inform us that all work in a department stops when a department head is sick or on vacation, we should have that discussion. Otherwise, I assume there is a succession of control to handle sick and vacation when department heads are on. Okay, somebody will stand in for them during that time. So I agree, we ought to, we have a lot of staff coming to these meetings.
Please address the Chair. Address the Chair.
Well, okay, sorry. I do agree, we have a lot of staff and everything else supporting us in the committee meetings and everything else, and that is owners on the staff. I would prefer department head representation and knowledge of the things coming through and the staff under them is working those items going forward. Okay? Understand where it's particular technical detail or financial detail. Additional staff may be recommended, but we ought to rely more on the department heads than we have in the past. And again, I assume there's succession of authority as And again, I assume there's, there's succession of authority as they go on vacation or unavailable for work that can handle meetings as we have lined up. I'm done.
So, so we've voted on it as is or are there any motions to remove any dates? Seeing none? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay?
Nay.
So the nays were Mayor Protem Holloway, Councilor Mayhew, Councilor Say, Councilor Christensen and Councilor Johnson. All right, thank you. Moving on to council retreat planning and discussion. Now turn this over to our City Administrator, Mike Sarrowing.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. What I wanted to do this evening is just briefly start the conversation about our retreat. It's tentatively scheduled for Friday, March 24th and Saturday, March 25th. And what I'm hoping this evening is, is that I can get two or three city council members who would be willing to work with the mayor, the city clerk and our facilitator and I to craft the agenda for the retreat. So first off, is anybody interested in participating? Like the new?
Given, given the work schedule, yes. And I can adjust if I need to, let me know.
So we have one, Mayor Protem Holloway, Councilor Watten? Any additional person?
Is there anybody else who would like to participate? Well, the city clerk and I will be getting back to, we'll, we'll be getting back to the two.
I twisted, Councilman Watten will join us.
Yeah, I already said him.
Okay.
The city clerk and I will be getting back to you. We'll try to be setting up a meeting as early as next week to sit down and start talking about the agenda.
Great. Okay. Councilor Mary Mayhew?
I'm just curious. So this will be a council meeting. Will the agenda then be approved as other council meetings are through the FNA Committee or how will this agenda ultimately get approved?
That would be my recommendation is, is that it's brought back to the FDA Committee and then ultimately approved by the City Council.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Next is Mayor's Report. So first of all, great job, Parks and Public Works, Police, Fire Department, Communications and all the other staff and the EOC during the snow and ice storms and recent windstorm. And, you know, from December 18th to the 28th, we had a winter storm that included snow, freezing rain and rain and windstorm, wind gusts up to 50 miles an hour. And these caused vegetation to fall and transmission lines and cut power to the Upper Valley for 24 hours and more. It also led to slippery roads, down trees, road closures and freezing and thawing pipes. In addition, the city responded to over 353 incidents. So the wind event taxed multiple city departments and personnel. And as a result, I also declared emergency proclamation. This became instrumental when we needed a backup power source for one of our city's water system pumps. Communication departments pushed out over 30, 30 media blasts to the community regarding road updates, warming and charging center stations, locations and also water conservation due to the power, power outages. Public Works performed the snow and ice removal and treatment of all the city streets. Water Department staff responded to 85 frozen pipes and 90 calls for broken pipes. Urban Forestry staff responded to, as of today, 84 tree related incidents. Police Department responded to 18 traffic hazard collisions in Snoqualmie and 23 North Bend, and there was one crash that involved seven vehicles. Fire crews responded to 94 incidents, nearly twice the regular amount, regular rate. Busiest day was on December 23rd when the crew responded to 26 incidents in a 24 hour period. And, you know, damaged property, city property, we had a water pumping systems backup generator fail during the power outage. That's required a rental generator was installed until the power was restored. And of course, broken pipes in three park facility buildings caused the buildings to be closed until repaired. So there was just very impressive with all our departments and everything you had that was going on. So well organized and nice job to our, to our city. Recently, there were seven local mayors, including myself. We sent a letter to the Senate and House Transportation Committees opposing delaying State Route 18 winding project, and I will be in Olympia later this week and will testify at the House Transportation Committee public hearing. And council, we sent out your signed Metro Letter to requesting services across State Route, State Route 18, and we copied all of our legislatures as well. And your, the legislative priorities, those are finalized in December, so please reach out to your legislatures and start talking with them about your priorities. And as I meet with them, I also give them a copy of it. Our communications PIO, Dana McCall, sent each of you a survey requesting your input to help identify stakeholders to form a community center expansion steering committee. So this will close on Friday, so we hope that you will respond to it and help pick out stakeholders to be part of this committee. And I think the other thing, oh, today is Law Enforcement Appreciation Day and we want to thank our police officers for their hard break, hard work and dedication in keeping our community safe. So thank you. That is all. So now we have, are there any commission, committee liaison reports? Councilor Watten?
I've, I've got a few that I'll go through real quickly. CLTC, the mayor is going to be speaking on behalf of the organization in Olympia and we appreciate that, but I think the, the point of this council and the city needs to know that the governor's proposed budget delays SR 18 several years and is going to take us well beyond 2029. So it's incredibly important from a safety standpoint. But here's, here's the big rub is we can't figure out why the governor has taken out of the budget of the federal dollars that were committed by the legislature to this project. And currently, the, the lobbyists are looking into that. The LA, the, the interlocal agreement with Meadowbrook Farm is underway and there's been a few meetings between the two cities and eventually the tribe to get that more formalized. As far as, as affordable housing, we're working with the, the other cities, particularly North Bend and Carnation to come up with a proposed timeline and we're looking at coming back to the council somewhere late February or March, just so that everybody's on the same page on kind of the next steps forward. And then lastly, was the surprise I received this last week and I was appointed to the Regional Law, Safety and Justice Committee, even though that I know nothing about, about that, I thought it'd be a great way to learn. So any input that you have or guidance would be greatly appreciated. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilor Christensen?
I should probably mention, I was on the Advisory Council for King Conservation District, which is a placement through SCA. I was on it last year as an alternate. I submitted my application again and was put on as a member. So there's that as well for regional. And then, excuse me, last week I also attended the SCA Lunch and Learn on Behavioral Health and it addressed the King County Crisis Care Centers levy, which is proposing to add five additional crisis care centers in King County. They are not, they're trying to figure out where to put them along with the things, but they anticipate going forward and having it on the ballot in April. If anyone has any questions, they also had a really interesting presentation about how they've structured crisis care centers in Arizona. And it was really helpful to, to see how they do it and it seems to be a fantastic program.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? Seeing none? So our next item is our City Administrator will give us an update regarding the department reports.
Well, good evening again, Your Honor and members of the council. Even though she's left the building, I'm going to take this opportunity to embarrass Nicole Weeby. As all of you know, every year the Valley Record lists the finalists for the best of the valley. And I just want to note that our community liaison was a finalist under the category of best city staffer in the valley. So if you see Nicole, congratulate her and like I said, take an opportunity to embarrass her if you have the, if you can.
Times can we vote to get her to win?
Excuse me. You know, as the mayor pointed out, and for those of you that probably haven't noticed that we've been experiencing some rather blustery weather lately and that certainly dominates the department reports, starting out with the Communications Division, you know, their focus on snow and ice, their posts on power outages, storms on the roads, road closures, et cetera, certainly dominated our, anything we had in the social media. For our Community Development Department, just note that the Timber Trails plat is currently under review. They're moving forward on the Model Train Museum Park and on the Rails Mixed Use Development. For the Fire Department, I think as was pointed out earlier, if you look at the statistics on the page, you'll see this huge spike in calls during the December 23rd, when we kind of had our biggest ice and snow, they definitely were out there doing their job. Our Information Technology Department is continuing to move forward on the priorities that were outlined in the budget for this year. More information to come on that. Our Parks and Public Works Department looks, I can't say enough good things about these guys. Hey, look, I left and went to Hawaii for two weeks, okay? And, you know, Mike was good enough to agree to be the acting city administrator while I was gone. Little did he know what he was in for during those two weeks. So, you know, huge thank you. Started out with a tree lighting ceremony where, where you may or may not know this, they spent the entire day trying to clear all the snow out of the way so that everybody could enjoy the event. That in and of itself was a pretty monumental task. So that down to windstorms, snowstorms and everything else. And for sitting in for me, thank you, Mike. I appreciate you and your team. And finally, for our Police Department, again, major spike in calls involving snow, ice and wind. And also note that we have two openings left in our Police Department. And by the way, the chief has two candidates currently going through background interviews. In one year, we have made up for the deficit in staffing in our Police Department.
Wow.
And I think chief, yeah, that really, really needs to be recognized. Thank you.
All right. Right, so nothing else on the agenda, so there being no further business to come before council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Second.
So moved by Councilor Benson and second by Mayor Protem Holloway. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? All right, motion passes and we are adjourned.